All right, it is five o'clock and we're gonna go ahead and begin our meeting. So I will ask Laura Lee. Okay, Laura Lee, please call the role.
Uh, Stu Boyd.
Here.
Amy Doran.
Here.
Pam Howard.
Here.
Dawn Kirk.
Here.
Barbara Cruz.
Here.
Alexandra Lawson.
Here.
Anthony Rumpel.
Here.
Thank you. Um, Stu, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
Sure. Oh. I was looking for something really little.
I know.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, um, first item that we have will be approval of the agenda. So are there any changes or corrections to the agenda for tonight's meeting? Hearing none, I'll take a motion to adopt the agenda as printed.
Second.
First from Pam and a second from Dawn. For approval of the agenda for today, October fourth, twenty twenty-three. Laura Lee, please call the role.
Stu Boyd.
Aye.
Amy Doran.
Aye.
Dawn Kirk.
Aye.
Barbara Cruz.
Aye.
Pam Howard.
Aye.
Alexandra Lawson.
Aye.
Anthony Rumpel.
Aye.
Thank you. And we will start with our school presentation from Ferguson High School on Thompson Career Campus.
Hello? All right, Jennifer, students, come on down. Madam President, Dr. Schaefer members of the board. Good evening, Jason Brain, Principal of Para-Ferguson High School, but more importantly for tonight's Thompson Career Campus as well. Um, we have a short presentation this evening and it's centered primarily on our geographical information systems pathway, which is a new pathway that's been in development over the past several years. Um, it just started here this August and so I would like to introduce Jennifer Blue-Haw, who is one of our instructors. She's an employee of Front Range Community College and she co-teaches this course with Taylor Dorn. So without further ado, Jennifer.
Hi. Um, as you said, Jennifer Mewa, I work at Front Range Community College. I'm our lead faculty for our geospatial sciences program. Uh, my fellow faculty and Taylor Dorn, uh, co-teaches this course with me. We split up the duties. Um, overall, um, I make a generalized assumption. You don't know what GIS is because, uh, that's, that's just a generalized assumption for most people. Uh, we are one of the biggest sciences that affect your life without you actually realizing it. Uh, generally, geospatial science is any science that utilizes data over an area to make decisions. So you've actually used GIS, you've done GIS, you just don't know that you have. And so if you've ever looked at, uh, you know, Google Maps on your phone, uh, you've called DoorDash and watched the little car drive along the screen until it comes to you. Someone owns us, like, like us designed all of that data. Um, if you've ever gone on Google Earth and looked at those images and said, "Oh, cool, Jim was over that weekend, they took those pictures because there's Jim's car." You've done remote sensing, you've looked at an image, you've analyzed what's going on in that image and you've come to a quantitative conclusion. And essentially, that's what we do. We focus a lot on, uh, computer, computer skills, programming, puzzle solving, uh, image analysis programming, uh, land survey. So the ladies and gentlemen on the side of the road, we deal with best of the scopes. That's part of us. So we're a huge science that affects so much of what you do. City planning, epidemiology, forestry, natural resources. I mean, the list goes on and on and on and on because cities, governments, all the cities, counties, state, federal, everyone, the fire, the police, they all employ GIS people. We're a huge science and we're just growing. One of the biggest growing parts of our industry currently is UAV or unmanned aerial vehicles, which everyone else calls drones. We stick away from the word drone, but that is one big part that, uh, of our science and we're trying to adopt that down at the college too. So we're always trying to say that's current, that's possible. So here, we're teaching our very first course that all of our college students take. Uh, it's called Vector-Based GIS. It's, it's, uh, we use, um, I'm trying to, I'm trying to be simplistic. Uh, we use some of the very simplest of datas to start making decisions and, um, our fellow students here, uh, took their first midterm this morning. So that was fun and exciting for them, except for the part where it was really challenging because we, we teach a very hard course and I can't believe how much they are all stepping up to just how hard this course is. We try to be very clear in the first week. This is a challenging course. This is a challenging science and none of them backed down. They all did super amazing. I'm actually strangely looking forward to grading their midterm, which I don't like grading, but I just wanna see how well they all did. So we're very excited. But with that, let's hear from them and what they have to say about my class. I'll do it right now, say it to them. Say it to them, I really want to say it to them. Jasper, help us out.
Hello, board members. I am honored to be here tonight. Uh, my name is Jasper Copentower and I attend Montefulle High School. I'm in the area level. Um, I chose to learn about GIS because I was interested in understanding local challenges and how they're connected to geography. And I was fortunate enough to be in the IT pathway last year and I got to learn about how different computers and different classes seem to work. So that very much helps with the software that we use every day in the past. And I think that GIS will help me in the future, teaching me the value of analyzing changes over time, predicting trends and finding the connection between various types of data and all the need applied in various communities. I hope to one day become either a biomedical engineer or a biochemist. And here's my handout.
Cool. I'm so honored to be here today. Um, my name's Ash and I attended here at first in high school. Um, so currently, we're learning, we're learning just how to use the software in general. We use the ArcGIS software. Um, it helps us input data and then help us understand data. Um, so we're learning how to read the data, how to input data and just overall how to understand exactly what we're seeing on the screen. Because there's a lot of numbers, a lot of words, a lot of different things. So gotta figure out how that works. Um, and then the coolest thing that I've learned about, uh, so far, we actually learned about on the first day, uh, is the geoid. And so a geoid is used to calculate the elevation. Uh, and so we say it's the height from sea level, but in reality, it's actually the height from the geoid. Um, so the, you're all proud.
I am all proud. So good!
So, um, the geoid, it's used, uh, it's used to get an average for the sea level because sea level, it always is changing. It's not a constant thing. So it's a mathematical model that you can use to get the average for sea level and then you can then calculate the elevation to get your sea coordinate and the X, Y, and Z coordinates as, like. Um, and then in the future, I hope to continue on and take the second year at GIS next year at, uh, Front Range.
Cool.
And it's still good.
He must not go, I promise.
Hello, board members. I'm so very honored to be here tonight. My name is Georgia Fennington. I'm from high school and I'm twelfth grader. Uh, I'm so stoked to be learning from a front range teacher from our school because it kind of changes your expectation for how we are going to be treated going into the future. It is a little bit different than how we are treated in high school. Specifically, a couple of things is we call them by their first names instead of Mr. or Mrs. class name, which is usually what we're told to do through elementary all the way to high school. So instead of calling her Ms. Mewa, we usually call her Jennifer. We also are treated a little bit differently with our expectations. We don't necessarily have to ask to get up to the bathroom. Most college professors just want you to get up and do your own business, take care of yourself. You are treated like an adult because usually when you're in college, you are an adult. Another thing is through most of high school, most of school, we use the same type of software all the way through. We've always used Google Classroom for eleven or twelve years of schooling and we're being introduced to different kind of software and different ways to get the information we need from our teachers to be able to do our homework from. In the future, I plan on going to a college. Personally, I wanna go to a higher college and possibly play varsity, so if they let me. I definitely wanna major in something technology-wise, maybe a little bit towards cybersecurity. I'm not a person who's ever done too GIS yet, but I love learning about this topic. It's so much fun.
Cool. Thanks.
All right, let's put those students.
Yeah, yeah.
At this point, I'll just highlight some particular back for you, please. Uh, just some of the more typical components of what we're doing right now. It's a one-year pathway. Um, students have the opportunity to earn up to nine college credits as they go through. Uh, one and a half credits, uh, elective credit or CTE credit in addition to three core content credits across BLA, math, and science. Um, and which one of those core credit opportunities exists depends on the semester. Um, and so that's, that's in general what it's all about. Taylor Dorn is the other instructor from Front Range and was unfortunately able to be here tonight. But at this point, if you have any questions, we'd be happy to take them, uh, if you have any. Our students were really excited about answering random questions.
Of course they are, like the second half of the midterm.
Yes.
Right.
Taylor's teaching tonight. We're primarily working in a program down in Front Range. So we offer mostly night classes, uh, usually on Zoom or in person. So, yeah, he would've been here, but he's teaching his own class, so.
Take questions for it?
Yeah.
So if you didn't already tell us, what do you hope to do with this? Like, how will you use this information? Like, this taking this class?
So for me personally, I'm learning, I'm hoping to learn how various geographic court, um, ideas go into other sciences I'm interested in. Um, but yeah, I really am just taking it because it's kind of like a weird fun pathway and I was looking forward to taking a class with people I know and learning about a topic I've been interested in for years.
How did you find out about the pathway?
Um, so the pathway, in order to have it started, it needed a certain amount of people that would get it started. So, uh, Ms. Ellis was trying to go around and be like, "Hey, guys, we should really do this." And, uh, I heard about it and I was like, "Man, that sounds, that sounds really cool." Uh, so I was like, "Okay, yeah, I'll do that."
Cool. How many students?
There's eight students.
Eight? Okay.
Uh, eight students and two teachers.
Okay.
What, so around here, when you're finished with this, what kind of, are there job opportunities that you can go?
There's job opportunities anywhere, everywhere.
So many.
Look left and right, that's a job opportunity.
Which one?
Look left and right, yeah.
Everyone, uh, so we're one of the fastest growing sciences just in the nation, period. Geospatial sciences along the Front Range, uh, is massively huge. Uh, Maxar, which used to be digital up there down in Westminster, Esri makes the software we're learning. They have an office in Brumfield. Uh, but in addition to the, to software manufacturers and, and data collection type companies, uh, city government, state government, county government, federal government, police, fire, hospitals, city planning, I mean, just like, we are so, 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 so big, uh, of a science that it's everything that has to do with planning, natural resources, city planning, uh, health, uh, I mean, it's just piles and piles and piles of. The more we collect all of this locational data, uh, the more we can analyze. So, um, I mean, like even your, your, your phone, when it gives you the little red line because you're about to hit some traffic, that's all data that's collected and then we can turn around and utilize that data later to maybe widen the freeway by one lane to help alleviate the traffic. And we can actually go as far as if we widen a freeway by one lane, how can we model the actual traffic flow? I mean, it's just data, data's amazing, I mean, I'm a nerd. Data's amazing and the, the conclusions that we can come to. So the, the job opportunities are, are massive and growing and getting bigger and bigger and bigger, uh, by the, by, by the month, honestly. It's hugely growing, hugely growing science, so.
And they're really well paying. I think your estimate was even on the very low side. For Colorado jobs.
Yeah, yeah, they said approximately seven to two thousand. Um, I mean, that's, that's fairly average. The, the challenge is, uh, coming up with those numbers is, is challenging because, uh, s- city governments, uh, surprisingly played really well and like counties and states a little bit less. Uh, but private companies can pay a lot, uh, nonprofits, yeah, nonprofits will pay a little bit less. And so, yeah, that number could be, could be varying and it really depends on the skill as well. Uh, programmers, uh, so people who know computer language, um, while we teach computer languages, but those who perform additional computer languages also can become developers and developers know more and they get paid more. People who understand CAD, CAD is a big part of our science too. So people who understand computer aided drafting and also GIS, uh, they have opportunity to make a lot of money. Um, database developers, database management, those, those people can make, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars, to be honest. And so, yeah, the, the number is, it's a funky number because it really depends on, on, do you wanna be nonprofit? Do you wanna work in the, the private sector? Um, you know, do you wanna do humanitarian efforts? Humanitarian people don't get paid a ton, though they do great work. And so, yeah, it's, it's just, there's just really so many places for, for, for this science to fit in, so.
Anybody else? Stu?
Is this a one-year program or a two-year program?
Uh, it's currently one year, um, with essential to expand into a two-year pathway down the road.
So they transfer over to the Front Range for their associates or their bachelors who agree with us. So, we're a bachelor's offering institution.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Great, thank you. All right. So, um, we are beginning, ready to begin discussion items for our upcoming board meeting, um, for the next, which is what, the twenty?
Eighteenth.
The eighteenth. So we have a few items that we'll be looking at. One of them is. Ready? And they're, we're gonna work with the intergovernmental agreements for Lerner County Sheriff's Office, Loveland Police Department, and Johnstown Police Department. And it looks like we have some visitors here as well. So I'm gonna turn it over to our friends.
Okay, thank you, Madam President. More to education, Dr. Schaefer, Todd McConaughey, Chief Operations Officer. Uh, just to plug in for the students, we have a planning department. So if you need any experience in GIS, it's okay. Trust me, so, I'm staying, we're always hiring.
Do it.
Um, I will quickly turn this over to, uh, John Genski, Director of Safety and Security, and he's gonna review, um, the IGA's we have in place and the modifications that's in front of you tonight for the vote on October eighteenth, so.
All right, Madam President, Dr. Schaefer, members of the board. Thank you for having me tonight. I have a few guests in the back room. I'll introduce them here in a second. Tonight, we're gonna go over each new IGA kind of separately and we're gonna go through just how well the differences of each IGA. The Stride Twenty Twenty Five Connection really summarizes that it's keeping students physically safe with an additional officer presence, uh, but also to expanding our co-responder program to help with that emotional safety, uh, as well. And I'll talk a little bit more at a high level about where that program's at and where we're moving forward. Uh, but really, we all, we know that if students aren't safe, then they can't live. So it's, uh, my job is to support that and that's what this will be. All right, so my guests in the back, um, first from the Loveland Police Department is Lieutenant Chris Jacobson, last to stand away, which is a senior on the LUGIS, and Sergeant Brian Bartis. Um, these two gentlemen oversee the Loveland Police Department School Resource Officer Unit. Uh, from the Lerner County Sheriff's Office, I have Sergeant Robert Cook, who's over there. And then I have Director of Acute Services, Ms. Cassie Damato. She's the supervisor for the clinicians at the Sommet Stone. Johnstown Police could not make it here tonight, but Lieutenant Williams oversees that. All right, so starting with the Loveland Police Department, the first IGA is an amendment to that IGA's current. LPE IGA is still in place. What it does is it adds two additional school resource officers to be a high clean school and a PDU with that. Um, as you can see there, our original contract is for six hundred and ten thousand dollars approximately and that will bring that cost up to around seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Now, all right, next slide, I would just go a little bit of, add it, add it. The next slide, please. All right, the next one talks about the co-responders in the agreement. So the reason it's labeled as LC SO, um, City of Loveland has a unique billing process. So what would happen would be is that if I would pay the Loveland Police Department for the clinician, it goes back into their general fund and it's kind of a weird thing since the police department does, is not able to recruit those spots directly. So the county is, uh, did, uh, differently. So what happens is, is the, um, county already has a co-responder unit through Sommet Stone. Sommet Stone just increases their bill to LC SO. LC SO just builds us. So that's how that works. That agreement is, uh, increasing to about, from a hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars to two hundred and seventy-two, um, thousand dollars to be paid annually. Um, the part of the reason is the second clinician will be assigned to the Loveland Police Department. Right now, uh, is the high level overview. I think from left, about this time last year, we're at three hundred and twenty-four per service. Uh, and what our hope is, is that we move from purely a response unit into a more prevention as well and also help train and educate our staff to make sure that they're ready as well. Next slide. In addition to, this will be the first IGA, um, MOU that we've had with the Johnstown Police Department. Um, what's interesting about them is, is that due to jurisdictional things with, uh, law enforcement and state, state laws, they are only responsible for a traditional SRO role in Riverwood School. At this time, they have a co-responder, so a clinician, that is assigned to that officer. But the reason that we're only paying twenty percent of that officer's time is because they're also responsible for the community, to the, also for the city of Johnstown and that municipality. That clinician at this time is unagreed. So there is no charge to the Thompson School District at this time for the clinician. We're just paying for twenty percent of the SRO due to the needs of the community that they represent. Next slide. So in summary, um, an increase of two officers from Loveland Police Department at an increased cost of, to a hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars, a hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars for the Lerner County Sheriff's Office and the co-responder contract and approximately thirty, like, you write, I wanna make sure the numbers are right for the record. It's about thirty-one thousand dollars if my memory is certainly correct for the Johnstown Police Department. If you have any questions, the reason my guests are here, if you have questions specific to the function of the clinicians or of the SROs, um, I have their command staff here. If you happen to invite them up to answer questions in the board, other than that, I'm hoping I can answer any of your questions.
All right, so start with questions. We'll go ahead and start with Nancy, please.
My question, so on the, on the mental health, we saw that's for the Loveland PD, but it's the, the Lerner Sheriff is paying for it. This Loveland Police Department, do they, does it really matter that in the end of the day we're just, we're still paying for three of it or?
You're, you're, you're still paying for two clinicians. Right now, what we're doing is to make sure that the resource is best allocated for both agencies. So the clinicians still work for Sommet Stone. They respond, they're evaluated by Sommet Stone. All these things are, for training is through Sommet Stone. The, uh, police departments just kind of, they're bodyguards and they drive them around. And sometimes, at, at times, unfortunately, our kids disclose things that are horrific and that law enforcement needs to take immediate action on. So that's where that parent is, so.
And then my only other question is, for the Loveland Police Department, the amount that we're paying, is that a hundred percent of the police officers' salary and benefits?
Um, the, we pay fifty percent of the police officers or sheriffs' deputies' salary and benefits. We pay a hundred percent of the clinician.
Alex Jacker? Stu?
Yeah.
Joe, I'll ask you the question, but they may be the ones who will come up and answer it. I'm interested in how much cooperation, um, exists between the three different organizations or agencies, um, in regard both to SRO and also to the co-responder programs? How much do they work together? Do they ever work together? Do they ever cooperate in terms of dealing with a particular issue, et cetera?
Um, I will invite Lieutenant Jacobson up to answer the criminal side of that. What I will tell you is from my former experience as a sheriff's deputy, there were numerous times where she would support Loveland, Loveland would support us, um, and all those types of things. Johnstown is kind of an interesting thing, but there are times where those jurisdictional boundaries need to stay intact, so.
Good evening. Um, Chris Jacobson, Loveland PD. I was having a hard time hearing the exact questions, seeing that there. Could you repeat it again just so I can answer it completely?
My question is, how much you cooperate with the other agencies? How often that happens? In what ways do you cooperate? Either with, um, Lerner County Sheriff's Office or the Johnstown Police? Uh, and how does that involve the co-responders? Basically, yeah.
Yeah, no, that's a great question. Um, I will start off by saying, you know, we have a very good relationship with all of our agencies around here. Uh, I've grown up in this, in Loveland. Um, I've been around all of these agencies my whole life. To be honest with you, I started at a very early age as an explorer of Loveland PD. Um, I can tell you, I came from another jurisdiction and, and came into Lerner County as a police officer. Um, the relationships that we have with the other jurisdictions is fantastic. Um, I'm super proud to be part of it, um, first of all. Um, I think most of it, because of our jurisdictional area, we have probably a stronger relationship with the Sheriff's Office just because their deputies are often around the city limits of Loveland. They're closer in proximity than Fort Collins. Doesn't mean that we don't have a good relationship with Fort Collins Police Services as well. It's just, um, I think proximity of the Sheriff's Office working around Loveland, we just deal with them more often. Um, we have shared channels, um, our dispatch, uh, channels with all of our police officers. All of our Loveland Police Officers have all of Lerner County Sheriff's Office channels on their, their police radios and vice versa. Um, we do joint trainings. Um, we, um, we have our bi-weekly SRO meeting. Um, that's with Loveland PD, Lerner County SO, and also Johnstown PD. So that's a time where all of our SROs are in one room along with a lot of other community support organizations, boards, probation, those types of things. So we're able to talk about issues that we're seeing specifically in the schools and how we're dealing with maybe specific problems or specific students. Um, so it's, it's a great opportunity to be able to do that as well. Am I answering your question? Is that the answer?
Yeah. Yes, you did. Uh, let me ask you a kind of a follow-up question that's related. How often do you meet together? Do you have regularly scheduled meetings?
We do. We do. You're specifically talking about SROs?
SROs and/or co-responders?
Yes. Um, so we're gonna be, we're actually, right now, Loveland PD is in the process of working with Sommet Stone to hire on our clinician. So that's ongoing as we speak. We just had more interviews this week. So hopefully, that's gonna be, come to fruition sooner than later. Um, our bi-weekly meetings, so every two weeks, we are meeting with our counterparts with LC SO to be in a room. So that's SROs, that's, that's Sergeant Cook, that's myself, Sergeant Bartis with Loveland PD. And all of our SROs are meeting in one room to discuss all of those things.
That's great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Pam? Dawn?
I just wanna make sure that, um, the reason why I'm like having a hard time saying these words, we're not changing anything in the MOU. That's why we're only looking at the IGA's, right?
Correct, uh, correct. And then the Lern, I'm sorry, the Johnstown Police Department, um, IGA is kind of unique in that we incorporated all the language from the MOU into one document. So that it's a lot easier to manage because, um, the LC SO main document and LPD main document is due for removal or the debate from the board next May. So as opposed to us trying to chase six, not documents, turning it down to three. I'd like to add after Lieutenant Jacobson's answer. Um, in addition to that, uh, you know, Dr. Schaefer and Todd always ask me to think outside the box. Uh, recently, those SRO meetings, we have three representatives from the DA's office, including the diversion manager, to make sure that we're bringing that service back to our kids going through our kids who get unfortunate, you know, side citations and charges. We're implementing best practices to implement diverse respect services so they don't stick to the kids' uncomfortable record. And then additionally, that, um, Program Manager, I believe her name is Dr. Kaczynski. She's a brand new with So- Sommet Stone. She has started attending those meetings as well to make sure that our co-responders have the license.
Thank you. We're not challenging you.
Can I ask just one more?
Oh, yeah.
Do you think there's?
So since this, I, I mean, first of all, I'm really glad we've been able to expand it. Um, I remember, I don't know if it was January, whenever it was, there was a presentation. So I was really glad that you guys could expand it. But since it started, has the Sheriff's Department, A, noticed any, um, I know we've seen the numbers, but a real drop in issues with students and then the Loveland, because you're just now starting. As you guys implement this, do you think this is a program that the city itself could adopt to help with some of the other issues? It was, I mean, because it's not, we see a lot of stuff going on with the students, but I think it bleeds over into everywhere else. So it just seems like a model that would be a win-win for everybody.
Absolutely. No, it's a great question. Just to kind of, and I'll let Sergeant Cook speak to his agency and what that looks like, specifically the Loveland Police Department. We have a co-response model as well. That's not within our schools. So those, that's a system that helps support our patrol officers mainly on a day-to-day basis. So we have four positions, four co-responders through Summit Stone that are assigned to the police department. They work out of the police department. They respond to calls for service with our police officers. So it's a co-response that where they're responding from the police department at the same time a police officer is responding from somewhere else in the city to a scene. And they're dealing with those specific calls together jointly. So I absolutely agree with you. I mean, I think this is kind of the new trend, this co-response trend. And now incorporating it into the schools is just one more progressive step to move in that direction. Maybe just kind of finish that topic off. To answer your question, is this the future? I think it is. We are, we have been asked, myself and Dr. Schaefer, we presented at the National Superior Tenderness Conference here in February. I'm presenting at the Call of the School Safety Summit in a few weeks. We present at the International Co-Responder Conferences. More and more people are interested in what we're doing. Because at the same time, we're seeing drops in citations, we're seeing drops in use of force. It's really, I think that it's moving forward. The Loveland Police Department is really joining with us and jumping. Because right now, currently, they use a secondary response model, which is where they respond from the police department versus running the officer, which is what LCSO uses for their prepared and that together. We found that that LCSO model works better. For us, Loveland Police is making that exception to help us and say, you know what, we're going to do that too. Even though it's outside of what their department does, they're trusting us, they're trusting LCSO. It shows that collaboration to really make this unit unique to LPD and Thompson. Since Sergeant Cook, sorry, I don't want to put him on the spot, but just maybe say a few words to.
I'm sorry. I know. I couldn't let you off the hook too easily. You almost made it. Maybe just some reflections on year one and then year two.
Sure. Thanks, Dr. Schaefer, and Chairman, and members and all the guests. Thanks for having us here tonight again. Robert Cook, I'm the Sergeant of the Sheriff's Office. I supervise both our school crisis response program and our co-responder program. So as you referred a little bit more about what we're doing with our YCRT, our Youth Crisis Response Team, and expanding it with Loveland Police Department, working with them closely, collaborating with Summit Stone and the school district. I think we're seeing a lot of success with our Youth Crisis Response Team and our co-responder unit within the schools. I think there's a big need for it, and that's, that's one of the reasons that Mr. Kozinski and I got together originally to try to talk about it and kind of put our ideas together to form this Youth Crisis Response Team. Just because of the number of mental health issues that school-aged kids are dealing with. We saw an important gap in services that really wasn't being covered as well as it could be. So having a co-responder model where an officer and clinician are working together for the best interest of the student and trying to basically do what, you know, Lieutenant Jacobson and I and Sergeant Barton and I really remember from, you know, early in our career, the community policing, problem-oriented policing. That's really what we're doing, is we're basically just trying to solve that problem and trying to get our students in this district the support they need. Getting them connected with services, involving the family, involving the school counselors, involving the school administrators. And it really is a situation where these issues aren't just a law enforcement problem. They're not just a psycho high school problem, they're not just a school problem, it's a community problem. And the kids are our future, as you guys know. And so it's important for us to try to take care of them now and try to give them the support they need now and the tools they need to become successful in society. So starting with our program inception last year in November, November 1st was when we started. Like Mr. Van Janski said, we've had close to three hundred calls for service. And we are pretty selective about some of those calls that we go to. They're crisis calls. That, that should sound alarming to you that we're having this many crises among the youth. But also, I think underscores the necessity of adding even like this. We are pretty innovative, I think. Across the country, there aren't a whole lot of school-based co-responder programs. So I really credit Mr. Van Janski, Mr. Tom, Dr. Schaefer, and the school board for trusting us with this idea and concept and actually putting it to work where I think it's been very impactful and positive way. And it's something that we're going to continue to build on now with another team coming from Loveland Police Department. And just to kind of talk a little bit briefly about our collaboration between Summit Stone, Loveland Police Department, and Sheriff's Office. We work very closely together. We have a great relationship. And even though, like, the co-respondering we have now is a sheriff's deputy and a clinician from Summit Stone, they work seamlessly with the SROs and Loveland Police Department. So it's been a great cooperative effort, and we intend to make it even more successful as we go forward. So thanks, I'm sure.
Can you say all that again?
Not real quick.
That's fine. Take all the time you need. It's music to my ears. Thank you.
I do want to thank the Sheriff's Office. I just want to give credit to Sergeant Cook and his team. They have come into the schools within the city while we have had this wait with our co-responder and fill that gap. So they are working seamlessly with our SROs to kind of fill this gap until we get our co-responder. And then when they're up and working, I think that's going to be the seamless transition.
I think we're pretty fortunate in our area, like you said, Lieutenant Jacobson, that we have such great cooperation with the police departments. If you go to other places across the country, you'll see a lot of animosity sometimes, a lot of barriers to that cooperation. And I think the culture of our area here in Limer County with each other and the school district with Summit Stone, I mean, we have a really good relationship. So I'm very happy about that, and it makes our, makes our jobs easier.
And we're very grateful.
Any other questions?
Any other questions?
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, you guys. Thank you all for coming. Oh, yeah. Drink to our paper. All right. Our next item. We didn't have to go through all of these. Sorry. All right. We are now going to talk about four point two on our attendance.
Oh. I just see your leg was under, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, no, no.
Please don't break her knee.
It might just fall off right now. When does it go?
Here, you'll make great moves.
Okay. Bond project reconciliation and proposed projects, use of contingency. And bond projects presentation. So turning it over to you guys.
All right. Thank you, Madam President. More education again. Todd Cody, Chief Outrage Officer, joining with Tammy Knower, Bond Director. So tonight we'll talk about just a quick overview of the 2018 bond, our bond reconciled. So what the work we went through with our Citizen Bond Oversight Committee, where that leaves us with remaining funds, proposed projects, and then just a quick summary of where we're at. So just connection to STRIVE 2025. The transparency and use of resources, I mean, this between the work we're doing in this, the work that CBOC's doing, that hits the heart of STRIVE 2025. We've got a large community group that's very invested in understanding where we're at and where we have been on the bond budgets, which really connects, does connect directly to STRIVE 2025. Just a quick overview. 2018, the voters approved, they give a $149 million bond. The two asterisks there, we've actually invested, we'll invest 208 million in the schools. So although the bond was approved for 149, we've actually put 208 million into the schools. So I'll say that again. Two hundred and eighty, that's a pretty significant increase from where we're at. How we did that was about 15.5 million in award of grants. The bond premium and interest earned was right at 33 million. And then we were really fiscally responsible with our resources. We sold some district assets, the tune of, it says about 11 million. You'll note down below, four million of it is from the land sale from north, the Summerfield site. That sale is still pending, so we've counted that in these numbers. The sale's still pending, pending some city council review. 3.5 million from water shares that we had excess. 3.5 million from the old Ferguson High School and facilities building that we sold and closed. And then we're still under contract and moving forward with the Monroe sale, but that, those dollars are not included in any of these figures. Tammy?
All right. Tammy Knower, Bond Director. Part of ending the five-year bond program at this point was to fully reconcile our budget system. So we went through the original 1,059 bond line items. Made sure between our own reconciling and the CBOC committee, everyone agreed that we've addressed the needs and the intent of the bond line items. Knowing that, in every feeder, that we were able to address those items, we were then able to take any savings that we, we found from that reconciliation and brought it back to district-wide contingency. So this effort to talk about reconciliation, we have over forty budget sheets. That's, you know, all of our facilities plus district-wide type projects where we go through. And, you know, each one could have fifty purchase orders or fifty contracts. We went through every single one of those and made sure to the penny, or at least to the ten dollars, that we were, we were in good and we had logged everything on our side. We also compared that to Business Plus to make sure finance was also tracking along the same lines. Again, to show that we finished these items. Only fourteen items remain from those original. Not to say that we didn't complete another 2,000 line items, but yeah, out of the original 1,000 line items, we got fourteen left. As you can see, it's radon testing, which will be completed by December. So that's where facilities comes in and makes sure the buildings are, are clean after we did our work. We have kitchen equipment at seven sites left, and we're just kicking off that project actually today with Lisa Kendall and her team to finish up those. And then the top one there, the heating and cooling, that's just finishing some of the replacements at the admin building. Some of the old RTUs that we didn't quite get finished last year. We wanted to kind of hold off, make sure funds were good, and then finish in the admin building, only because we like to put the funds towards schools first. So that's the effort we did to make sure we, we met the intent of the bond. Now, knowing that, we go to the financial side. And like I said, we went through every budget sheet, every purchase order, every contract. Made sure payments were made, where we could close purchase orders, where we could recoup a little bit of funding here and there. And as you can see, on the right, the pie chart shows there's 1.8 million dollars that was pulled back from each feeder and into district-wide contingency. Now, that number's huge. You know, maybe not compared to 209 million, but 1.8 is a lot of money. So then I get a little nervous. This next step is to say, okay, how much is, you know, did we short anything again? No, we met the intent of the bond. Those funds were extra from maybe the funding that we brought to each feeder. We were able to bring those funds back. You can see the table on the left there shows approximately how much by feeder. So again, it's pocket change by feeder. It goes back into the district and can make some huge changes now that we want to talk to you about. We pulled those 1.8 million dollars back. We, we combined it with what we had in contingency. So we showed that we have 6.590 to propose to use some other projects that we can do and further enhance other, other facilities in the district.
Do we do our standing probation now or is it going to wait?
Please wait, please wait. But what we want to make sure we touch on tonight is, you know, we're presenting to the board, but CBOC, the Citizen Fund Oversight Committee. You know, along with business services, there's a lot of eyes, you know, in within these bond numbers. But the first step for CBOC was to say, did we meet the intent of the bond? You know, that's number one. And then the contingency dollars that we're looking to save in that 1.8, you know, is that appropriate? So this was action one that they took in our last CBOC meeting to say, okay, the intent of the bond program was met. You know, you've concluded that, you know, all the bond items plus a lot more have been done and how these funds were reconciled was appropriate. So that was just want the board to know that CBOC did, you know, go through this. And then they did a unanimous vote in the last meeting we had. And then the next proposal is with the 6.5 approximate million. What are the proposed projects we'd like the board to look at and hopefully then approve in our next board meeting? So the first one there is high priority maintenance needs. You know, I will say that all these really touch maintenance and buildings together. So it was hard to kind of say, well, where's the different buckets? But high priority maintenance needs, there's some roofing we need to still catch up on. So there's three schools that are looking for still some roofing replacement. There's some parking lots we need to look at, you know, some small lighting things. So high priority maintenance needs is this one. Safety and security. So we did get a vest grant for, you know, the 700 some thousand. Our match of that for exterior door security is right at 500,000. So that's within the 620. And then about another 120,000 for BDAs by directional application. So what we don't have is in some of our buildings, school radios don't work very good. And then I mean, first responder radios don't work very good. So we need to put that in some of our schools. The next one there is trying to, one, save on our water. So we've already done some turf fields throughout the district, is installing a turf field at Loveland High. And then if the board recalls, we put in place an IGA with the city Loveland last year for basically a permanent lease that they gave us the land so we could bring baseball and softball back to Loveland High. So then that's the other part of those dollars is to actually install the baseball and softball field at the school. Indoor air quality solution. So this is, there's a lot to talk about under this. What our proposal is here is to say, okay, here's the budget for what we, what we want to look at doing. And indoor air quality refers to AC in areas. As we talked about last with the board, you know, how do we attack different areas? As we went through this last heat season, I'll say, there was different ideas that really came up from the schools. So we said, okay, maybe we can do this. So the concept we're looking at is instead of saying it's classroom A, B, C, D, is maybe an area. So like Loveland High cafeteria, Kerry Martin gym. You know, again, we don't have enough to do, you know, a mass, but from the initial numbers, it looks like we can do a couple of elementary's and like a Loveland High cafeteria type with those funds to provide at least a space for kids to go. It becomes, all of a sudden became more complicated to say, you know, here's areas and how do you define? But so I think the bigger solution, as we talk to principals and staff, is just providing a place to go would help. So that's what that is. Bond management. So our lovely bond team, you know, they had initial budgets to, yeah, to keep them here for five years. Now to sustain our staff to get these projects done for about another year is that 155,000. And then our main server room in for IT, the cooling on it is old. Well, actually, it's just gobbled together. It's not what we call it, system. But that's about 375, it is proposed for that, is to make sure we properly cool our main server room for the district. Those are the projects. The thing, the next piece we did is CBOC took another action on this, just asking one. You know, we asked CBOC, when is this proposal adequate for, in staying aligned with our proposed bond language? And these proposed projects move forward for board approval discussion tonight and then approval on the 18th. In summary then, we have about 208 million invested in our schools. We have about 6.5 for additional projects. We've added about 60 million worth of work. And then again, the 6.5 reinvested back into our schools. So from there, are there any questions?
Let's start with Alexander. Do you have any questions over where we're heading?
I do. With, you talked about some of the money would be for parking lots. And first of all, the district parking lot is a very nice location. So that's good. Is any of those, is any of that the talking about the school parking lot?
That's the one we're talking about. Yep, yeah.
Okay. Very good.
Yeah.
Okay. Stu, anything?
Not really a question, just a comment. I continue to marvel at the fact that 149 million dollars became 60 million more than that as the projects unfolded due to shrewd investing and a whole variety of other things. And that's, it's money that benefits Thompson kids and staff and isn't that what we're all here for anyway? So great for everybody who was involved in securing that additional 60 million dollars here.
To Stu's point, so if we look at the, the financial climate in 2018 when the bond passed versus the financial climate today in 2020. To Stu's point, uh, so if we look at the um, the financial climate in twenty eighteen when the bond passed versus the financial climate today in twenty twenty-three, um, it could not have been more ideal, um, in terms of the time to sell bonds, invest, favorable interest rates. Um, and so that was very, very helpful, uh, and and I think um a huge maximization of of dollars and resources and we're able to get a lot of, we're sitting in one of the uh projects here in this building um as a result, and so um, just again, kudos to our our taxpayers for uh for um their wisdom and knowing that twenty eighteen was a great year to do that and um, and so, yeah, but it's uh, we're able to do a lot of investments into the school district.
Okay.
You know, I think the thing that strikes me every time we go over, but especially today, when you talk about, you know, a thousand fifty-nine line items and I mean, you guys have it so microscopic down to the the last penny. And I think that that attention to um detail, accountability, transparency really lays the groundwork for the next mill end bond, um, that we just, that that the district decides to go for. You know, my dad and my mom and dad used to say, the proof is in the pudding. And I think that that old saying is really um just spot on for this because the proof is in the pudding. Like, when you look at everything and every line item, I mean, we we couldn't be more responsible. I mean, admin CFOs and and bond managers and all of our folks could not have been more financially responsible. So thank you for helping the district lay the groundwork for future work, I mean, it really does build upon itself, um, because there's a lot left to do. And it's never gonna be done. No, it's like your home, right? That's the thing, yes. I look at my home every day, I'm like, oh, I just got that done, but yeah. It's just always on going. Yeah. Done.
Is it time for the standing ovation?
Yeah.
Um, actually, can you remind us, CBOC makeup? Like, there's how many people just in general and then it's it's district and community members, primarily community members?
Yeah, there's sixteen members.
Okay.
And in order to make an action item, either way, they have to have at least eight members there.
Okay.
Um, so that's all, and it is made of community members from all three communities or two communities, where's it? Loveland and parent groups and the business, um, there it is. So we've made sure by presentation to you guys that those entities were covered by the membership.
Awesome.
Thanks.
Thank you.
No.
Brilliant to see it, Nancy.
Ah, I just, I just think it's phenomenal, the timing, I mean, I don't, I hope, it, I hope the twenty twenty-four, the timing is also good, but I don't know. So, but this is really good, the way you guys did manage, especially with all the brands. I mean, that's just really utilizing a lot of the, I love to do everything the best that we can. So I think that's real, especially I'm not sure there are too many AC part, everyone's looking at it, so, good job, thank you.
So our next step.
Yes, our next step is um similar to what we've done before for bond projects, we'll come with a bond project approval, just so we can say project budget. And then we'll still come back to the board, you don't have that when we have, when we issue contract, you know, all those pieces. So we'll still follow the same contract here steps from now, uh, but then for our next meeting, it'll be really this list in memo form to say, um, you know, approval allocation from contingency to these projects.
And it'll be on the eighteenth, we have to have executive prior to twenty-four nine, okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, yeah. Just what it is right now. All right. So the next item is our classified staff appreciation, um, we proclamation in this, we aren't going to read it or anything now, just letting us know that it's coming up and we will have somebody read it aloud at our next meeting. Because it'll actually fall within that week, correct?
Absolutely.
Yes. Oh, but we'll plan all that when we did the calendar.
Worked out well.
Yeah. And then um four point four is our standard action content items, these would be the ones that have the personnel action items, the uh packet that includes contracts or if there's any gifts or donations, those are the items that will be listed there as well. Any questions on those?
Um, the only question I have, and it doesn't need to be answered tonight, and maybe if you want to email it to us all or the night of the vote. On the the personnel, there's um, I noticed that there's a lot of paraprofessional special needs that resign. Just do we know what's driving that and are have we, are we able, how easily are we able to replace them? Um, again, I don't expect you to answer that tonight, Bill, Dr. Silver's, but maybe any email you sent to us all or maybe the night of the vote? Is that a yes?
Yes. I I thought you had the.
I saw it, I saw that.
You have a hook on my husband.
I thought I was going to go scream frost, but I gave that, yeah.
You look like Robert, try to act like, yeah, I heard every word you said, but I really didn't.
I will look into the parispecial needs resignations and group costs.
Okay. All right. Anything else that anybody has any questions on items that we know are going to be on our agenda for the eighteenth? All right, we're going to turn it over to Stu for a little bit for um a legislative update on Pob HH, correct?
Right, that's actually going to be the third thing I'm going to talk about.
Oh, okay.
Before that, um, I emailed Senator Marchman several days ago, I did not hear back. Because I'm curious and I'm sure you're curious about the status of the legislation that uh she has orchestrated, I guess for lack of a better term, uh, with Congressman Nagus, who has agreed to sponsor some legislation at the federal level that will hopefully benefit uh Thompson schools as well as schools maybe all over the country in regard to ventilation and air conditioning. And so I don't have an update on that, but I've shared with you before how excited I've been to find out that we actually have a member of our congressional uh representation group from Colorado who's willing to uh take a look at sponsoring legislation that will help us in this regard. Then, secondly, very quickly, I contacted Matt Cook at Casby a couple of days ago. I said, is there anything on the horizon in particular, legislation-wise, that you think I should share with our board? And he said, well, nothing in particular, it's more of the, you know, same kinds of things that are normally coming before the board or before the legislature. Um, he mentioned in particular accountability and school funding. And uh, so I guess we're gonna just have to wait with bated breath to find out what legislation is actually included. But as Barb mentioned, what I want to spend uh most of the time talking about is Proposition HH. I went through the Colorado Blue Book, I pulled out information related to Proposition HH, I think it's about seven or eight pages. I tried to distill it into something that's readable and understandable. Um, it's all important, but uh for board members, I'm not sure it's all necessarily relevant to what we need to know. So hopefully, if you haven't had a chance to look at that, um, yet, you will do that. I divided it into several different sections. The first one being, uh, if Proposition HH is approved, this is kind of in general, the six points that would be addressed, how does it impact taxpayers is the next section? How does it impact local governments? And I uh highlighted a couple of sentences for you that when I was reading through this, I thought, well, as a board member, I'm kind of glad to know that. One of them is in the second paragraph, under how does the the measure impact local governments? The last sentence, not all local governments that collect property taxes are treated the same by Proposition HH as explained below. And school districts are among those local governments that aren't necessarily treated equally to everybody else. And then the last sentence in the uh third paragraph, school districts and home role jurisdictions are not subject to a particular limit. It's also explained. But you might be interested in seeing the primary arguments for and against Proposition HH. And if you happen to be looking at it right now on your screen, uh, let's let's just quickly look at the couple of sentences that are part of uh the third point under arguments for, because this directly impacts school districts. By allowing the state to retain additional revenue, the measure benefits public schools. The state's spending cap has limited Colorado's ability to fully fund education for years. Proposition HH provides a funding source for at least ten years using money that the state already collects. And let me tell you too, in regard to all the information that I've that I'm presenting to you, I excerpted it from um the Colorado Blue Book document. I didn't read it and summarize it, et cetera, this is actually what it states. And um, it's going to be an important election for municipalities, for other government agencies and for what we're particularly interested in is school districts. And I actually emailed Matt this morning and I said, has Casby taken a position yet on it? Uh, I didn't hear back from him, I imagine he was in in meetings all day. I know when we talked about this last spring, the impression was favorable because of the real advantage of Proposition HH for schools. But I don't know if Casby has or will actually state a position, so that's what I have for you for the October report.
Thank you.
Thanks, Stu.
I need to get up and move for a few minutes, so we're gonna take about a five or ten minute walk around or whatever you would need to do. And is that okay?
It's great, I was gonna say the next section, uh, actually, we will be walking around.
Oh, that's a high, okay.
But we can certainly take, if you need a break, that's great. Do you want to take a five, ten minute break?
Well.
How soon will we up and up, are we? Do we break this at, do you like to, or you think?
It doesn't matter, I just kind of wanted to plan it, I just know I need to get up and move.
Okay, you want to start?
Definitely, okay, all right. Okay.
So hello, everybody, um, I'm going to be doing a quick conversation about artificial intelligence and specifically ChatGPT with all of you and how we're using it in TSD. We're going to have this as a show and tell, and we're going to go into a station rotation, see my theme? Um, as we go forward and let you all experiment and play with it, so go ahead. This is our students, our stu- our kindergarteners were graduating twenty thirty-six. ChatGPT just came onto the landscape in November of twenty twenty-two and it has increased exponentially in just in that short amount of timeframe. So imagine what it's going to be like when our students are graduating in twenty thirty-six. So as we know with TSD and to make sure that we're empowering our students, we prepare for the future, we have to make sure that we talk about this so that they are prepared for a future that AI is going to be prevalent in everything they do. So I wanted you to, I invite you to think about AI as a different piece, it's the new digital divide. It's going to be the ones who can effectively use AI versus those who cannot use it to collaborate will be a big divide for our students as we move forward. So, artificial intelligence is based upon a deep learning model. So it's basically machine learning that uses neural networks to learn from data. So what it means is it's at, it's performing tasks without specifically being programmed to do so. A large language model, I know, a large language model is what ChatGPT is. So it's based upon generative human-like text, so it learned text and it was trained on massive amounts of data to learn syntax, grammar, context and all, everything else. So think of it as when coding was first occurring, is you had to kind of learn coding stuff. Do you remember Boolean searches back in the day when you guys had to do Boolean searches? That was not fun to teach. So when we go through Boolean searching and that process, now it's really the average person can have a conversation using just normal text and that transformed what AI could do for us. So something like ChatGPT and some of the other ones that we're going to play with today are based upon a large language model. So, how does it work? Basically, it's mimicking the process and decision-making of of the human brain, but it's analyzing data, it's identifying patterns, it's making predictions. So think about when you're taxed and sometimes when you're trying to start a sentence, it gives you a word, it predicts that word for you. So that's kind of that first generation of it, it's just gotten um more sophisticated. So I'm not going to play this, it's less than twenty-five seconds, but it's Kung Fu Lee discussing AI. What he is talking about in his sixty-minute interview is it will have more impact on the world than electricity did. So I'm going to let that sit for a second, it's going to have more impact on the world than what electricity did. So what I really want us to think about is using artificial intell- intelligence and things like ChatGPT and other AI pieces um is to have our students become a prompt engineer. There's actually a job called the prompt engineer in many big offices and businesses. You can actually get a degree right now of being a prompt engineer at Harvard with AI. So your job is to really understand how to write the right kind of prompts to get the information out from you. So an example could be, you could go to ChatGPT and say, explain artificial intelligence to me in simple terms. So that could be a prompt that you would put into it. Or create ideas for a back-to-school night and it would create those for you. Um, it can alter and change based upon the data that you have. If you look at it and you're like, oh, it's way too long, make it shorter for me. Um, change the reading level from a twelfth grade down to a sixth grade, all of those things we can play with and do. The limitations are, sometimes it provides incorrect information, just like sometimes when you search on the internet, you can find incorrect information. And sometimes there's bias or harmful content that may be a result of this. What's the most important part for any kind of large language model is to understand what the training data was that it was used. That's the most important piece for it. So we're going to practice. So one of the things that I want to just warn us before we ask you to practice is you're going to bring your device with you because we're going to go and we're going to play, we have some prompts that we want you to put in and we're going to see what it looks like. The most important thing is the one that we're playing with today is ChatGPT. It is an open AI source, meaning it is using information, we don't own that data, we have to be very thoughtful about what we put into it. It's open source, so we are not going to ever put in any PII, so, you know, student information, any kind of personally identified information, that's what PII stands for. We're not going to put any student data in there, anything like that, so we make sure that we think carefully about what we're putting into this model.
Can we trust what it tells us?
Um, we can and can't, so um, so we'll talk about that and you'll see it in some of the stuff that we're playing with.
Okay.
So, so what I'd like to do is I'd like to have the four of you, um, Nancy to Pam, come with me into the back here. And then I would like you three, or be pushed wherever you want to go to go into the back with Rhonda and Rhonda's going to help you, so bring your device with you please, because we're going to play with our devices.
Yes.
Okay.
Have to give up.
So while we take a couple of seconds for this to come back, thank you for being willing to play and look at some of the different options and understand what's available. I want to um just remind everybody that this just came on the scene in November of last year. So it isn't like um this has been around forever and you just didn't know about it. It has been blowing our minds at how quickly it came aboard. So I'm going to go ahead once the thing opens up into the next um piece, we did our station rotation. So now we have to really think about what do we do? You know, now that we know that this is here, what do we do? Let me just tell you, when it first came out, everyone blocked it. That's what happened, immediately it was blocked by all ID departments. Certain states were trying to block it, that was the immediate reaction. And it quickly came out to, hmm, this is, you know, this is going to be a bigger impact than electricity, so we can't block it. Specifically, ChatGPT is open to our students, um, because it's thirteen and above, so it is blocked at the elementary level because that's the user policy and the privacy policy. So now that we know that, what do we need to do? In this world of AI, the biggest piece is the human capacity. Right now, when you look at assessments and what and um essays that were written by AI versus written by Right now, when you look at assessments and what and essays that were written by A I versus written by students, A I has only gotten on the P S A T or on the S A T about a fifty percent piece. They have, it's not gotten any higher because they're not creative. You're not linking it to your personal experience, it's the human part of it. It gives you something to start from, but the human always outweighs what this can produce for you. So these are our skills of the future, so maybe if we're doing some different things with A I, we can spend more time talking and collaborating and having discussions. Because I'm not spending so much time on the writing task of it, but maybe more on the editing and the conversations with others. So where are academic concerns? Bias is the most important piece. If the data that was trained on it had bias implemented in it when it first got it, it's still gonna be a biased piece. One of the best articles that I found was, um and I have some different articles for you to look at, but when you like maybe use it to provide feedback, you're asking it to do a male versus a female, the feedback was a lot longer for the female, a lot shorter for the male. So it was interesting to look at. So sometimes you can get false information. This is really important for digital equity right now. I'm gonna say it's not just about what you just heard today. Do you wanna share that with everybody, because I'm not sure everyone heard?
Oh, my two, the two different stories?
Yeah, yeah, just the first one about what people have access to or not, yeah.
About the coupons?
Coupons.
Yeah, so on NPR today, there was a story about um store coupons and then how pretty much all grocery stores are going just to digital coupons. And that there's a group of people that are incredibly upset about that because a lot of older people, low-income people don't have, don't have smartphones. And a lot don't have internet access and so don't have access to these coupons anymore. And it's not, I mean, it's a pretty large amount of, I mean, like thirty something percent of people over sixty-five, I think, don't have smartphones. And of low-income people, of like people making less than thirty thousand dollars a year, again, like maybe a quarter of them don't have smartphones or something like that. Yeah, and so it's a sizable number of people who are getting totally shut out, yeah.
So that equity piece, making sure that we understand how to use that A I. Remember when our kids are graduating kindergarten, this is, this has consumed us in the conversations and how many new additional tools have been created since this first started. Academic integrity is the most important piece when you think about it. You know, what was written by an A I tool, what was written by you? And is that fair? Is that equitable? What do we need to have conversations about? Um, and then just teacher readiness for this type of a tool. Um, yes, we could go down the path of blocking, but all our kids are just, not all, but a lot of kids are just gonna go at home and use it anyways outside of our school setting. So those are our biggest concerns. So here's a bunch of different articles, you can see them, you can click on them. They go to um some different bias that was done with different A I tools and where they're getting their data from, so definitely just look at those. So will A I take my job?
Yeah, yeah.
As an educator, it will definitely not take our job, okay? But it will also, someone who knows how to use A I might be replaced by someone who doesn't. That's a guarantee. This is the future, it's not going back, it's outside of the box, so how do we use it? So Shelley Palmer, I can give you another um video on what he's been talking about, it's also sixty minutes, about the future of what A I is. So we're working on policies. So we've created a T S D resource that we're starting, and it's just a draft and conversations about how to be able to do this, specifically just for ChatGPT and some other pieces. We're gonna work with TALC and others to just decide on any procedures and possibly a policy as we go forward. But this will not be done inside um just by I T. This will be done with a bunch of different teachers to have the conversation about what we are going to do. So the biggest piece, sorry, thank you. The biggest piece for us, you can go on to the next one, um is we'll have conversations about responsible use of this tool, community-wide conversations, and dispel some fears. There's a lot of fears out there about the use of A I and things like ChatGPT. So those are the pieces that we need to have for next steps. Something that I really want you to know is that, remember, our kindergarteners are graduating in twenty thirty six. It changed drastically from when it came available in November to where it is now. Imagine where it's gonna be in twenty thirty six. This is the most important piece. I B, our I B schools are now saying you can create and submit for your I B assessment something that was done in ChatGPT. You can, it's allowed. I can do something in ChatGPT as my essay for admittance to Harvard and to many other schools. It's allowed. What you have to do is you have to say that it was attributed using this chat bot. So that's where we're going and how quickly it has changed. So that's kind of what's presented in front of us. I'm gonna go to the last one, what kind of question, oh, I think that is my last question. Are there any questions based upon what I just kinda shared with you?
Kelly, not not a question, but what's occurring you, occurring to me as you continue to talk is that there will be a tremendous need for P D, for our teachers, and maybe more in some content areas than others. I shared when we were over at the table over here as a retired English teacher. This really concerns me in regard to what I think perhaps may stifle creativity, make things too easy. And as I said to them, I know nothing about this basically, except what I've read a little bit. But there will be enormous need for P D, for teachers.
So Harvard has the newest um piece that they've just added for their degree is Ethics and A I. And that's really what we're talking about. Ethics and A I is an actual undergraduate degree.
So how are we, um, you know, the K one and two, they might sort of grow up with it, but say that middle school, they, you know, what are we going to do as a dis- to help these kids learn how to use it, sort of like, you know, literacy in A I? I mean, it's just there.
Those are gonna be the hard conversations for all of us with teachers, with professional development. What are we gonna do, what's our policy? You know, like right now, I V is allowing you to say, hey, it's just a source. So this is what I started with. There's been some really interesting conversations about where I started with ChatGPT and then where my essay ended, and not, and that was me editing and tweaking it. So I started with something, but it looks very different at the end. But then I put it in there, and um we've seen a lot of people who write books, they put their chapter in there, evaluate it for grammar, evaluate it for clarity, um evaluate it for creativity, those kinds of things, you know. So it's ask, it's kind of like a personal mentor or tutor, if we look at it that way. Um, and as I've said, anyone who scored anything that's been written specifically just from this does not get beyond a C. It doesn't get a B or an A.
Everybody please take your questions.
Yes, please.
Yeah, of course, of course.
So when my daughter was graduating from college, a fellow student had created something, I think, I think it's called Chat, no, I'm sorry, G P T zero, which quickly and efficiently detects whether an essay is ChatGPT or human-written. So is that anything that we're gonna touch on, are we gonna stay away from that? I I could give you just as many articles of um professors who have been fired because they accused someone according to ChatGPT zero um as writing it, but they they have proven that the person didn't put it in ChatGPT and it was written on their own.
Right.
So um there isn't an A I detector out there that's gonna for sure determine. Instead, use it as a tool to say, I started here, this is where I got to at the end.
This reminds me so much of um when Dr. Shear was our superintendent, and he was telling the story about how when basically, you know, Google and the internet was really becoming a thing, and he was the superintendent out in California at that point, and he was having a coffee at Starbucks with a group of gentlemen who were just lambasting him about allowing kids to use Google or, you know, internet searches. And so he says to this group of of gentlemen, he said, okay, so who was the thirty-third president of the United States? And they're all just like, I don't know. And so Dr. Shear said to a group of high school students in the next table, didn't know him, said, hey, kids, can you tell me who the thirty-third president of the United States is? And they're, yep, and so he said, okay, guys, like, here, here's the reality of what we're moving into. And that was obviously many, many years ago, and but it just really reminds me of, we're at this baby step right now. And we, you know, we are, like, when you look at twenty thirty six, I don't think any of us, maybe you can, Kelly, but I certainly can't imagine what twenty thirty six is gonna look like with this sort of capability.
I mean, it'll probably be, this A I will probably be, you know. Right, and I didn't, I didn't see the um, you know, the iPhone, I didn't see the Apple Watch, you know, none of those things. You know, how all those things have changed. When we first think about math, no one's gonna have, you know, when we first started to use calculators, everyone's like, oh, I can't do that.
You're not gonna have one with you.
Oh, that was my dad, Mr. Engineer's Live Rule, he was living.
It's like, oh, calculator. Not only do we have a calculator, we have an internet and now a personal tutor in our pocket.
I can just ask it to remind me of the Pythagorean theorem, so I don't have to do it.
Um, I guess my question is, I think for me, what seems diff- what feels different about this seems different is that A I isn't, it isn't just a search engine, it isn't just a widget or a calculator. It's something that they've found a way to give it data and that it actually learns, it it matures, it develops, and it grows, and it learns. And it, like you said, it's so new. So I'll be honest, there's a part of me that says, I would rather go slow with this because no one has ever seen, no one has ever seen computer intelligence that learn. I mean, it's literally learning and growing and maturing. So I'm not saying don't use, I'm simply saying, maybe let's be a little, a little cautious about it because who knows, I have, I don't think any of us can say that we can know in twenty years what will it have. You know, so, I mean, that's my, because it is very different, it's very exciting, but it's very different.
And that's why, you know, if we go back to that piece of the people that we're gonna have to work with, the conversations that we're gonna have to have, and the um, do we create a policy? Do we create a procedure? Do we create recommendations? Um, is very important for us to talk about.
Kelly, does it have affective implications?
Tell me more.
Um, dealing with feelings, emotions, things like that, or are we talking about something that's very literal, something that's very factual? So is, maybe I'd, maybe I'll even say emotional, af- affective kinds of things.
So um if you put in pieces inside there saying, make it, you know, take my writing and make it um more professional, I guess. Take it and make it more emotional, it will actually say, I'm not sure I understand what emotion means. So um, so there isn't necessarily an affect to it.
Okay.
Um, because it's just learning off of the training data. Now, if the training data was biased in the first place, then yes, that's going to be different.
Because there's so much information that it can easily start to learn what a happy tone versus a dark tone. I I bet there's already language in your wording that is gonna get you pretty close.
So there have been some changes since ChatGPT one came out to four about that dark tone concept, and and they whittled that down, you know, as they're learning through that process. So yes, there's things that we don't know um about it, so all the more reason for us to have conversations as a group to um understand where to move forward. Our students have it, so it's important for us to be able to learn and collaborate and talk together.
Yeah, I, that was my thought on on some of that, is that our kids aren't, I mean, they're way ahead of us on this because they've had it in their hands in what is a bigger chunk of their life, perspective-wise, right? This six months to them is bigger than it is in my years. And so they're, they've normalized it and and all that already, and their learning curve is different from mine because I didn't have a computer until I was nine. Um, and so this feels like one of those things where the generation gap is is gonna be profound. And anything that we, like, you know, anything that we don't learn is gonna be an easy place for us to feel very far behind, right? Like, that's where kids are more at risk because we don't know how other people are using it, right? That I think.
To that point, here's just to think about arguably, our students in elementary school have experienced more change than we have in our entire lives up to this point. Like, if you think about, you know, we're in our forties, fifties, or sixties, and you look at that as a timeline, as a continuum, about all the change and innovations, what have you, and then you think about kids who were born in, let's say, two thousand eighteen, for example. There's been more things that have changed in terms of um technology and and innovation and things that we've really experienced in our entire lifetime. And so that that exponential increase in change will continue faster and faster, like the knowledge is doubling and doubling um almost continuously. And so our inclination, and Nancy, I I agree, has always been, let's let's be pragmatic, let's take things slow, let's 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 cautiously enter into this. And as we do that, things continue to change exponentially, we become, so there's a, there's, it becomes a balance, right? And our, and and yeah, our, many of our students in terms of, with regards to tech, technology, know far more or fur- or further along than many people that are teaching, um, just around that because they just, the the kids are brought up in that generation, they understand.
But isn't there, I mean, we've already, I've heard conversations, you know, some of our meetings about the impact on kids of 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 so much phone time, so much technology and tech and, uh, what is it? TikTok and Snapchat and all of these things. And and now we're gonna throw in ChatGPT and whatever other iterations of that become. It just.
And it's really up to the parents.
Sometimes too much technology can, I think, dehumanize us as well, there's a danger of that.
Oh, definitely. No question, and you know, we have, um, you know, many of our schools, maybe it's cell phone use during the day unless it's, unless the teacher, you know, unless it's part of the instructional lesson. And cell phones are ubiquitous, and you know, we may not allow it in school, but kids are certainly using it outside of school, constantly, so.
So we did give this to you to think a little bit differently about how education is changed. One of the things that's really important is um thinking about plagiarism and cheating on this continuum, to really think about what was completely bot-created, you know, that's definitely not what we wanna do, versus what is completely student-created without ever looking at the internet? That's not a reality either. So somewhere in between here are these. One of the things that most students have really enjoyed, um, the power of this could be, I take my essay, I put it in there, and I said, provide me feedbacks. What are the strengths and the weaknesses of this essay? There are times that I've written something like my blog post and I and I, I just couldn't get it right, so I pasted that in there. I'm like, make this more clear, help me make this more clear. Um, does it make sense to somebody who's not um I T speak? Does it, is it making sense? So it's kind of like having a personal tutor for me. So um, one of the things that that what this does is if I've maybe written using a tutor like this, I get to have more conversations with my peers, with my teacher, and really get into that reflective part about instruction and writing and reading, which is really big for our students. That's where the change occurs, is when you have the conversations and you reflect and you grow. So I agree, it has to be much more human-centered. Just knowing though that it's here is kind of important for us to also acknowledge. Anything else?
This is very interesting.
Yeah, thank you, I mean, it's very high up here, let me tell you.
And that's just one of them, so I mean, there have, there are hundreds more that have come out since this one started.
Wow.
So.
Yeah.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Nancy and Rhonda.
I have ex- I have excused the cabinet.
What?
My excusing cabinet for the.
Oh, yeah.
They might really like this.
We haven't even done our big pyramid with Barb at the base.
Barb?
Thanks, you guys.
Before we go into the next item,
Uh huh.
Pam has given me an update that I wanna share with you.
Okay.
She used technology to find out who has endorsed Proposition HH.
This is a very short list.
It's it's a short list.
But there's more, but I just grabbed a few.
A A R P or ARP.
Yeah, I remember that.
Casby has endorsed it, so has Case, the Colorado Alliance for Retired Americans and the Colorado Fiscal Institute. And that's what she was able to pull up pretty quickly.
Yeah, there's more, I just.
So um, anyway, when I said I haven't heard back from Pam to find out what the Casby place is or position is, Pam took it to the next level and she she has that information, so.
I did not use chat.
And she did not just chat, did she?
Well, I think it wasn't happening, it was definitely.
I didn't know. That's right, it's too new. Yep.
Yep.
Okay. Alright, the next piece that we're gonna work with and think about, it has something to do with what Laura Lee put together for us. So Laura Lee, you wanna tell us what we have? It's if you recall at our retreat in August, I believe it was August, we talked about the importance of having something, um, a plan in place for onboarding new board members. And so we um, just sort of started with the process that uh, Laura Lee had for us.
Uh, yeah, you guys asked for us to put together like a handbook or operating operating procedure manual. Um, so what I did is just some basic information, I put our mission and vision statement, some district information, how the board is, what the composition of the board is, schools in each district or districts. And then I basically went through a lot of our policy, um, like powers and duties, board member code, code of ethics, operational norms, um, organization of the meeting, um, board officer duties, our meetings are put together, what an executive session is, why you can go into an executive session, how our agenda is made, um, the rules of order, basically Robert's rules of order, I took a general because Robert's rules of order is huge.
Yes.
Uh, so it's very general. Um, I talked about public participation in there, then we did some stuff, uh, put together some stuff of the superintendent, the roles, responsibilities, his evaluation. Um, I put the board policy process, how we develop policy. And then, you know, the committees that everybody's on, I just put that in there, I did take names out of there. I I love the cabinet paper in there, but I took board member names out of there.
Like.
Um, how how you do requests for information.
Yeah.
Um, and then I went through what boards have a grad and STRI2025. Um, and in the Google document, this is a PDF document, but in the actual Google document that I'll share with all of you, um, the table of contents is actually linked to exactly where it goes in the document, so you can just click on it and it goes there. Um, I will also put in there on, you know, we're on our website, we can go to what boards have a grad is, excuse me, and what STRI2025 is, so I'll link the website in there, cause there's a lot more information, I put the bare basics in there. And then the appendices are basically appendix A is the school board meeting schedule, appendix B is the school schedule for students. Um, C is just um, like social media stuff, we've talked a lot about that, social media for board members. And appendix D is something that has been put together, um, like the first ninety days for board members. Um, so the appendices is something, of course, our board meeting schedule changes every year, our schools changes, you know, so that would be something we would have to change up. But this is totally a draft model, totally a like a starting point, I don't know, do you mind?
I do, so if the board recalls, one of the things that you charged us with was to come up with a handbook for brand new board members. Um, think of it as like T S D Board of Education one oh one. It's probably not practical to put together a six hundred page document, but we wanted to put something together that was agile. And like this is the most critical things to know from day one, you know, just kind of sort of starting. We're bringing this forward as a draft because we really wanted your feedback or input. Is is there other information that we should include, is there too much? Um, all of you at one point, we're we're a new board member. And um, we recognize that when you're elected and sworn in, you like to start immediately. And part of it is, you know, we will work on um, more of preparation for that first board meeting so that you're not like, what am I doing and you know, when you call on me, what am I supposed to say? You know, so we'll we'll do more of that upfront, that was a good learning for us. We're also gonna wanna talk about board mentorship and so with a one on one, like what are those expectations? What what should be covered? Um, how often should you be meeting, you know, um, how do we support one another? But that should be board member to board member, certainly I have one on ones, but um, I'm not a I'm not an elected official and so I'm I can, I'm more of information, not necessarily a mentor. Man, you know, board members should be able to mentor board members, not superintendent mentoring board member, if that makes sense. So we wanted to just create a little bit of space and time now, just for you to look at this, provide us with feedback. We obviously have a little more than a month before, you know, we'll have at minimum one new board member uh, or more, you know, so. But this is a a document that um, is certainly agile, it's digital, it can be updated continuously. Um, but what do you think? What are your thoughts on our first attempt?
And hopefully it'll be useful to you guys too, even not as a new board member, but a easy place to look up information.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I love it, that it's all in one place, cause you know, I've got fourteen different papers and trying to keep them straight and you know.
Yeah. Pam, when I started, and we were all, you know, when you go to the board documents and it tells us, hey, director, uh, area director of area F, I didn't come out right, but you know, what I'm trying to say.
Put in.
And then it had schools. It wasn't just the schools that might have been in your area, you were assigned to schools in other areas as well.
Yes, correct.
So sometimes, I mean, everybody had about the same number of schools versus one director right now might have two or three, others might have six or seven. And it used to be that there were multiple directors assigned to various schools.
So like I was assigned to Berthold High School as well as, let's say, Stu.
Yeah. And everybody had at least one high school and one middle school. That they were, it didn't mean that it was your school, it was a school that, I mean, that it was you were considering a school that was outside of your areas, just that you had other schools that you were a part of.
And the reason for that, as you know, is because some of you are are in a director district that is huge landmass, but it's very few schools.
Right. Right.
Some of you are a director district that might be smaller, but have like twenty schools in it. And so if we do it by just district, it's it's very disproportionate.
Yeah.
At some point, you know, we talked about, um, you know, a future board may wanna shuffle the deck chairs a little bit or or and and we're totally open to that. Um, but it it it, I'll I'll just leave it there, I mean, you know.
Yeah.
And something to revisit.
Right.
Yeah.
I think it needs to be considered.
Yeah, I feel like the last time I went to look at that, I was, it it didn't have the two directors for each high school anymore?
No, it it's.
Yeah.
It's only one?
It only happened after we were restructured before the last election.
Okay.
And I think it just because they were working really hard at balancing um, that.
Okay.
So I think it just needs to be revisited between now and whenever that we add that to it.
I think the director districts were redone because of population, not because of the schools in the area that it was done because of population.
It was.
Right.
No.
And this just reflects what
What schools are in.
are in those geographical areas.
Yeah, that's all it's really showing.
What I. What I liked about having um, two directors for each high school is that sometimes a citizen might know me, but they didn't know Stu or vice versa. Or they, you know, maybe they uh, you know, hated me and they're like, oh, I really need to talk to Pam about Berthold High School. But instead of a contact Stu, it's nice for, I think, the citizens um, and the parents to have two directors. And a lot of times they would just email both directors and say, I see that, you know, Pam and Stu are Berthold High School, you know, representatives, so I'm emailing you both or whatever, so.
Yeah, I think it reality.
I think it was more, um, yeah, just helpful for the the citizens.
Yeah, so I think it's something that we should wanna go back and add on.
I mean, how do we really know that?
It was on the website and in the other like different hosts.
Cause if not, I don't think it is.
No, we changed it, yeah.
Oh.
It's there's something out there still.
These are, this is.
It's still out there, yeah.
Right here is what's on the website.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
It's just that it changed after people got their fingers into really um, rebounds, the number of,
Well.
and it's based on the mon- the number of citizens.
Populations, well, a population, you can.
Councils, yeah, populations, yeah.
We by law have to do that.
Yeah, I knew we had to do it, I just think that at that point in time then, it never got readdressed after that last election.
Yeah.
So I think it needs to be at some point.
Well, as far as the manual and on the schools, I think it would be nice if in the list of schools, it also included the address of each of the schools. Um. Okay, I think that would be.
The addresses of the schools, how you said.
Yeah, of each of the schools. Cause I or and or included a map of the district and where all the schools were. Because a lot of these, I mean, I certainly had no idea where a lot of these were when I started.
And where I knew that that was the one across the street, but I didn't know the name, uh-huh, and it was kind of nice to have both of yous.
But I didn't have the name, right.
Yeah, so I think having having both, having the addresses and then having a map of the district and the manager.
And principals is where everything is.
Really helpful.
Principals to me was like one of the most awful things to learn. And that's hot, it's a lot of digging for a new board member to be like, oh my gosh, I have to look up all these principals on, you know, on their websites or whatever, it's if we can just list them out, that's just so nice.
Just fine, knowing that that changes often, and so the fact that.
Yeah, yeah, all the time. But if it's digital, that's not too hard to change, so, okay.
No.
Or even just link to it with.
Yeah, without having to.
In that one spot would be good.
Uh, can we have ChatGPT do that?
So they don't always draw the forms or.
Cause it feels like we would all use it.
So, yeah.
I would definitely use it.
Is there other feedback or input or anything else you'd like to see in this?
If we're going to continue to represent director districts, which are basically geographical districts, it seems to me that um, the schools that are in each of our geographical districts, our director districts are the ones that we should be responsible for in terms of communication.
But I guess that's my question, as a director, I am responsible to the commu- to the whole uh, district.
District.
I'm not responsible just to those four districts, four schools.
No, I, yeah, I I understand that.
So as what is there, what is that responsibility, it's somewhere, nothing ever says, gosh, I'm in charge of Mountain View and High Plains and Peakview and Winona, so what what am I supposed to do with those four schools? There there's nothing that indicates to a new board member, okay, those are your schools. That it shouldn't be that way, but it should be something.
Cause we always stress that the election is at large.
At large, yeah.
Yeah, and you vote for everyone, it's not like, you know, it's not like city council where you have your ward and you have your listening ward section.
That's different, yeah.
And you know, it's very different, so.
Yeah, so just to think about, the.
I don't.
And that is confusing to people, cause people do think, well, like city council, you can only vote for one and then you can truly represent that more.
Yes. Yeah.
But you know, when I go and talk to a a community group, I'll say, hi, I'm Pam Howard and I represent Thompson Valley High School in Long Clark.
Right.
You know what I mean, I'm just like, hi, I'm Pam Howard, I'm on the school board, yeah.
Well.
But.
Well, and I think part of it has to do with the fact too, that we are can't do things independently, right?
Right.
I mean, we're in a special.
Oh, so it doesn't.
Yeah, good point.
And I complicated things quite a bit, and I'm I'm I don't know that I'm the only one that's like this, but we lived on one side of town forever and moved to the other side where my kids didn't go to school, right? So the people who know me, who contact me because they know me and they have my contact info are primarily the schools you have.
Right.
And one of them, there's only one that is a school that I'm connected to. And and I think Alexandra, you have Ferguson.
I do.
But I'm here all the time, right?
Right.
And so like, that that was one of those things for me where I was like, well, if you do it just based off of the ones that are closest to my home, those aren't the people that know me best. And I know that some of those people actually knew other people on the board better. And so I don't know, I think it probably just one version of how that might be, but.
I think the at large, this is important than, you know.
Look.
Yes. Just.
Look, let me finish my thought. It it's a little easier for me to represent a director district because the director district is a different community.
Yeah.
And you've all heard me say, when I introduced myself, I represent Director District G, which is the Berthold Community. And I guess what I'm gonna say to what Pam said is, why can't Pam say? I am the director for District D and these are the schools that are in direct director District D. And I'm saying it primarily for the sake of people knowing whom to contact. People in the Berthold area, and it's not just me, it was Dave Levy and it was the people before that. They knew who to contact because um, that director district serves the people who live in that community. Why can't Loveland be six distinct communities? Yes, of course, we all represent all of the the students in the district, but for the sake of contact, why can't you all have the same opportunity? And I'm using that word uh, purposely. I think it is a uh, an opportunity for people to know that I'm the first person that they could go to if they wanted to as opposed to sending a general email to everyone, so.
Sure. But I don't like the word representative, represent a whole.
Yeah, well, maybe if we do, maybe.
So that that's the word that catches, I think, is that kind of representative.
Maybe maybe there's a better word.
Yeah, I think. The content.
I was just gonna say to to Pam's point, because we are elected at large. And so to me, and I only have two, I have a preschool and an elementary in mind. So but I think for most people, when they go to the website and they see the schools, basically they look at this right now, the director is like, oh, that's at least, think of him like that's my point of contact. And then I might go from there somewhere else. But at the end of the day, we we are all representing and responsible and accountable to everybody.
Right.
You have, you are different, cause it's all contained, but even if you look at the high schools, the high schools have overlapping feeders, so it's not like, it's you your feeders, they're all in Berthold.
Oh, that's true.
I mean, El- Berthold Elementary, Ivy, I mean.
Yeah, you're right.
So here, it's a little, but we're, we all can go out in the community, represent, talk, help, um, and of course, always remember, I always refer to, um, Walt, give me some of your information and then I will refer you to Dr. Shaver
Yeah.
cause he's the guy that makes sense happen.
That's like the same thing.
Can I ask a question about that? We redid the m- the boundaries uh, two and a half years ago, right?
Yeah.
Twenty twenty.
For the last election. And we didn't have to wait for census data, cause that's way too big of a time period to wait, right? So we may not need, like, it's not census based, is it?
Well, it's population based and I think it it is based on census and so that's exactly what.
Yeah. I mean, they worked with like, you know, Pam, yes, so.
The county to give us the.
Pam, her.
But again, but my earlier point is that schools are clustered differently. So as you look at the different director districts, some director districts have far more schools than others and some have very few.
Yeah.
So if, I'm just making, so Director District E, for example, might have four schools, Director Director District E might have fifteen schools just because of the geography and so, um, I think it's it is a good conversation for the Board of Education to have. And I and I would, um, when I first got her, it didn't make any sense to me either. I mean, I looked at her like, what? But I didn't, you know, stand just said, don't touch her. And then you also said, just like, this is a board decision and discussion. So um, I would invite um, the Board of Education um, to, which could, it would be a great conversation, like this short conversation here. I think it would, because you do represent the entire district, you are at large.
Yeah.
So you represent from Berthold to Fort Collins to, you are you are a school board member for the Thompson School District and you live within specific communities and you're known in those communities and your children in some cases have gone, you know, so. I get it, cause you're community members within and there is a comfort level and people will say, well, Stu, you're my next door neighbor and you know and you've had, you know, so.
Yeah.
Um, I get that and that's great and that doesn't, my guess is that you have people that reach out to you that are not in your district, but they know you well and they're very comfortable and awesome, that's the way it should be. So I, it's a good conversation, I don't think there's a right or a wrong answer. I'm, I guess I would argue more for parity or equal. I'm I guess I would argue more for parity or equalness, so that that every board member has a sort of an equal number of dis- uh uh of schools. And kind of regionality makes sense to me, like it doesn't make sense to have like a north and east, you know, like to be all over the place. But there's different ways to slice that pie up.
So the the reason I ask that question is that I I am thinking of the physical boundaries we have right now. And I remember like one of them shrunk, two of them shrunk, a lot. I mean, yours is like.
Yeah, mine shrunk.
The five houses next to you have the whole population of my six hundred miles, right?
Yeah.
Like they're very different. Something like that, I mean, the math, I I mentioned math wasn't my strong point, I'm gonna ask you, you need to do it for me, but um. So Berthitt came to mind because when we look at census data again, Berthitt's gonna get sliced.
What do you mean?
It's dou- doubled in population.
Oh.
Right? I mean, that's a place where we're gonna see boundary changes.
I see what you're saying, yes.
Because that's where a big part of growth is happening.
Yeah.
We're seeing the northeast portion of our district too, where High Plains is, that that is becoming very full.
And it's. Yeah. Yeah.
And we're noticing also decline in more of the central part of the district, so as it becomes re-sliced, it'll look, the boundaries will continue to change.
But to your.
Can I ask a question, as delightful as this conversation is, does it really have anything to do with new board member orientation?
No, no.
The only reason is that they need to know what schools are in their area and that's it, I mean.
Which this tells us and then I feel like we can have this discussion with them at that point in time. I don't, I'm sorry, but I'm trying to be.
Right, no.
Stay on topic. I do.
Then we could leave early.
Yeah.
When we do that, when we do that, I would like for us to to get two directors for each high school.
So we could go home and go to bed.
Intentionally, whenever we do that work. Um I do think it's really nice to be able to have two people go to some of these big things. And and it makes sure that we have some, or not two people, but at least one person to go and it sort of helps us to do coverage. So I do think that would be worth us thinking about when we get there.
I appreciate the discussion, I appreciate Pam, what you said about the word represent. And as a result, I'm going to change what I say from now on. I will no longer say I represent Berthitt, I'm gonna say I am the contact person for the Berthitt schools. Or I am one of the contact people for the Berthitt schools, I've never thought about this about the semantics. And then I think you could all do that, couldn't you, for the schools to which we've been assigned or that are in our director district or or whatever. Okay.
I like that word.
Is there any additional feedback um for this?
Yeah.
I actually, I I like the work that you've done, Laura Lee, I like that it links. I'll be honest, I don't have any specific feedback yet, cause there was there's a lot there, so I need time to like really, but I I think it's a really great start.
Yeah.
And anything like the agenda, I attached the policy under it, so it would take you to the website where the policy is at. So I mean, basically, you know, I, in any of that stuff, I just go with it.
Mm-hmm.
It wasn't any personal bias I put into the agenda.
Okay.
Yeah, and we appreciate taking time, I know that took a lot of time to build.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
Pull it all together, but made it all a little bit easier. Having it all in one place.
And you can certainly, I mean, we can still do it through inviting, I mean, you know, you can have it however you want. This will just be easier as far as changing and um accessibility and stuff like that.
One of the topics I'll wanna check in with you all in our next one on one is just on mentoring. Um because that that was really, it's kind of sort of part of this conversation or not, but um. We wanna be able to create the structures to help you so that you can um we can provide mentorship um to incoming board members. I think there's high value in having that one to one relationship. So what are those common expectations? Um what are the things that you wanna cover, how regular should there be meeting? Um so those are something, we could talk about just what your thoughts are and then I could gather them for you all and then share it out and make it something.
One thing I remember on that from last time. Was it. Like I have an observation that I've been the mentored and the mentor. And it's very different and I think we sort of left it up for now unless I'm remem- unless I'm missing something. We left it up to like work with your mentor to figure it out, you know, right?
Right.
Yeah.
That's right. It was individual.
Yeah, and I I mean, I get the value in that a lot. Um and also I think that having some basics that we agree we're gonna do would be really helpful for all of us. Because I know that, you know, when you're new, you don't know what to ask and you sometimes take things for granted once you've been here a while. And so that would be really helpful, but beyond this, like how do I add color to all these great job, it's something that'd be helpful for me.
I would I would just remind all of us that we all can use a mentor at some point in time.
Mm-hmm.
Did you did you know what you said?
Mm-hmm.
We can all use a mentor at some point in time.
Yes.
And we.
Yeah.
Is that directed at anyone specifically right now?
Me, please.
Alright, anything else you guys have?
I knew it's.
It's time I get a mentor.
Um.
You okay?
I'm great, yes.
Yes, I just would like to. Share a funny thing, uh two different friends of mine, for some reason, um texted me today photos from October first, twenty nineteen. When we were doing the groundbreaking here.
Oh.
For, so happy fourth anniversary.
Wow.
Wow.
From, it's like the sweetest, so Barb, I, there's a, they sent a photo of you and me in our hard hats.
Oh.
Yeah, and Jonah Goose was here, I mean, it was such a big deal.
You was a big deal, it was weird.
It was a big deal. And it was so cold. Yes, it was. It was such a miserable, it was freezing. Yeah, the champ was out there, but it was. But we were, you guys, almost exactly to the day, and there we are, so it was kind of coming back, yeah.
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 Coming back, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we would be outside right now, but. If this room is outside.
Yes.
That's very cool.
Sure.
Yeah.
Um just, we have one more board meeting in October.
Yes, the eighteenth.
But then we went through, right? And then the first Wednesday of the month is the third.
The first.
The first.
Well, thank you. Okay, yeah.
Should should know the calendar, but I do not.
You know the first?
So that meeting is gonna be a study session and it will have all of us.
Yeah.
Yes.
So will the meeting.
Yes.
So will the sec- so will the the business meeting in November, will also have all of you.
Because. Yeah, they have twenty two days to verify the the election.
I I already asked five.
Yeah, so Sam will be here at the November meeting as well. Should have asked you.
Yeah, you should have asked him. Um.
It is most, it is it is probable we will need a special meeting.
Yeah.
Um in December, the first week of to seat the board, so we will, even though um it's likely we'll know the results of the election well before that. It has to be official and we know Boulder, just call it out, is.
It's Tiguan, yeah, for their hundred and twenty five people.
Um. But so we will uh we'll do a seating, um a special meeting in December and at that time, we also, I think, don't we do elections for board positions?
Right away, yeah.
Right away and then a few days later, we're off to Caspi.
Yes, we are.
A day later, I mean, we did it the night before.
Yeah.
Part number, that's right.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're at the will of the counties in terms of how women certify the board.
Yeah.
Wow. Yeah.
Yeah, okay, thank you for just helping me bring that, cause it's a lot.
Okay. No, cause I realized that the other day too, so I was like, oh, are you doing, am I, November meeting, she was like, yeah, oh, okay.
Yeah.
No.
I was gonna go to Massachusetts, but I can go.
Alright.
You have to wait.
Um I don't know, it is seven twenty eight and I'm going to um. Close our meeting. This meeting is adjourned.